I know.
Alrighty, looks like everybody's back in position here. I'll call on Ms. Nunn to read our next docketed item, please.
Okay, docket PZ-19-016. Application's been filed by Dan Don Langen for the approval of waiver of section 5.7. Lot arrangement, size, shape, item E, joint access of the subdivision regulations for an existing tract of 8.1 acres. The property is located at 6306 O. Floydsburg Road, Pee Wee Valley. The zoning is R2 Residential District.
And Mr. McAtire, I assume you're introducing the docket for us?
Yes.
Okay.
The zoning is R2, and the size is 8.1 acres. The zoning is R2, size 8.1 acres. Here we have an aerial. Please note that our GIS does not allow us to take out the parcel highlighted in red at the top, so that is not part of today's application, even though it shows that. There's a pavement and building. Lastly, the zoning map. So, like mentioned, this is not included, so we are only talking about this portion right here. Site history, a minor plat was applied for and approved in June of 2016. And the second bullet is actually, there is a mistake on that, and I do apologize for it. It states that a conditional use permit for a detached accessory dwelling with a location variance was applied for and approved in 2018. Now, that was for this parcel right here, this larger one. Back when it was applied for, our permitting software showed this whole parcel looking like this. So it showed one parent parcel, when in fact, it shouldn't really be for this one. According to section 5.7E of the subregs, no more than three parcels may take access from any single or street encroachment not considered a frontage, street, or private roadway. The applicant is requesting that an existing 8.1 acre tract share in existing access easement. No width is given, bringing the total to four parcels taking access from a single street encroachment. The applicant is proposing the following lot configuration. Tract 1 is 2.277 acres. Tract 2, 1.505 acres. Tract 3 is 26.97. Tract 4 is 8.1. Here we have the plat. One, two, three, and four. Also, this blue is the existing roadway easement. Here we have a view looking west into the subject property. Here you can see there's a utility. Here we have another utility. Fire hydrant. Just another view, looking from the existing driveway. Here we are looking west into the site. Here we are looking into the first house, which is all the way off of the plat. Here's the second lot, I believe it is 2C. This is lot 2C. This is lot 2A. Here we are looking north towards the, towards Old Floydsburg Road. Over here, we have the proposed tract, or not the proposed tract, the existing 8.1 acre Over here, shows the Virginia Chismes existing house, lot 2C, with the house being built. As we're going up here, this is the third house, or third access. Then behind the cars, you go down the hill, and then you hit Old Floydsburg Road. Here's a view across Old Floydsburg. Here's a view east. There's the west view. And the south view, looking back up the existing access easement. In summary, the applicant is requesting approval of a minor plat with a waiver of section 5.7.
I had to stop you. He's already, the minor plat's already been approved. What they're asking for is a waiver of 5.7 to allow four lots off of one joint access. The minor plat has already been approved on June of 2019.
Right. Ms. Spoh. So the applicant is requesting a waiver of section 5.7, lot arrangement, size, and shape, item E, joint access of the subdivision regulations.
Okay. So let me clarify that again. It, this, this track already exists. It has its own access on Old Floydsburg Road. They went and investigated, and you'll hear, I'm assuming testimony, but I know this track really well. They investigated having their own driveway, and found that there was a utility in the way. We are actually improving the alignment of Old Floydsburg Road. So the water line was moved during that process. And then they came and wanted to get a curb cut to get in there, and the water line's in the way. So they're asking to use the existing driveway that accesses three lots for a fourth lot. And again, no minor plat involved, it's already been approved.
Okay. Mr. Solomon, anything you need to add?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. With that, is there, let's see here, I guess, question of the commissions, uh commissioners, are there any questions for the staff? Any questions? Ms. Finney.
On this diagram...
Yep, it's in your staff report?
In the staff report. Where, where does this road actually come onto Old Floydsburg Road?
You had a picture, Tom, you can show them that. The existing driveway, you mean? Just go back to the existing.
The driveway they want to use, yes.
Well, that, that's the driveway, and it is, Tom, if you will go, do you have the minor plat in here, that, this plat that he's looking at? There's an existing driveway, and I think you showed it there. See it in kind of teal color blue? So the picture that he showed is what's already there, existing drive going to three lots, and that's the configuration. And they would just have an access agreement coming off of that to tract 4. If, if you all choose to approve having four lots from a private driveway.
Okay, so that little L-shaped area is actually what's the existing driveway is now?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then, Tom, if you will go back to that picture of the driveway coming off Old Floydsburg. Yep. Yeah, that's, that's our, that's in the site, that's Old Floydsburg. Draw the line where Old Floydsburg is. Yeah, that's Old Floydsburg there.
Okay, any additional questions? Additional questions? All right, seen none, we'll open it up to presentation by the applicant, or representatives and others in support of the application.
Do you tell me so to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I need your name and address.
Don Langen, 1915 Production Drive, Level 4, 0299.
All right, go ahead, sir.
We are requ, I am representing the owner, Jeffrey Gum, and we are just asking for a waiver, please? No, sir.
It's an individual.
An individual.
But he can, you own the property?
No, sir.
You can't represent anybody.
But I'm the applicant, I'll be put in for that, that's what they asked me to do, sir.
Is Mr. Gum present?
No, sir.
We can't go forward.
Pardon?
What is it asking about?
Well, he's, he's listed as the applicant.
But he's not the owner.
Well, but we, but we do do this, where an applicant with the owner's signature can apply for things, because we've done that, sometimes a subdivision comes in, they don't own the land yet, but the applicant is a developer.
You might do that in planning and zoning, but nobody but a lawyer can represent somebody in front of this body.
They're both individuals, not corporations.
But he doesn't own the land. So he's representing who owns the land?
No, he's, he's the applicant. He is applying for this, are you a builder?
Yes, sir.
Still can't do it.
Yeah. I'll practice in law without a license.
Okay. Well, that's, I mean, John, that, so that's your, is counsel for Planning Commission, that's your ruling, okay?
That's not my rule, that's the Supreme Court of Kentucky's rule.
So since the applicant is not here, is, do you know, I mean, the owner, Mr. Gum, is, do you know if he is available this morning?
This morning, I'm sure he's in surgery. Yes, sir.
Okay, I guess then the option would be to table this until next month.
Commissioners, are you all okay with tabling this until next month, so the owner can be here?
You need a motion?
Yes.
Move to table?
He would have to be here.
Yeah, yeah, that would be fine, Mr. King.
You're saying he will either have to be here, or have representation by an attorney, is that correct?
Yes.
That was not the information that was...
So you're moving to table?
You got some bad information.
Um, I'm sorry.
We've, we've not ever done it that way.
Okay, motion to table.
I thought I'd...
Okay, we have a second?
Stopped about two years ago.
Okay, multiple second. Non-abatable, non-admissible, and a come-to immediate vote. All those in favor of tabling this docket, which is docket PZ-19016, until our meeting next month in September, our regularly scheduled meeting, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Okay, the motion, either this docket has been tabled till next month. Sorry, sir.
So, I am texting the next docketed item's attorney. He is not here, he's across the street.
Okay.
So I don't know if we want to move to the last docketed item, I believe they are here with their attorney.
I would say let's move forward with the who's here, and then we'll, we'll handle the, the fourth one when he gets here. So, so let's go ahead, Ms. Nunn, if you would, let's read the last docketed item on our agenda.
Okay, so docket PZ-19-018. Application's been filed by Odom Farms Development for the approval of a revised preliminary subdivision plan, road layout for Brentwood Section 6. The property is located at terminus of Chlor Lane Crestwood. The zoning is R2 Residential District.
All right, thank you. And Ms. Alvey, I assume you'll be presenting the docket?
Yes. Okay, so this is an application by Odom Farms Development for a revised subdivision plan, as Ms. Nunn stated, for a road layout for Brentwood Section 6. The property is zoned R2, and this particular section is 32.4 acres. This is an aerial view of the property, they're outlined in blue. This is the sections of Brentwood that have previously gone to record. This shows the existing zoning, the lighter area is zoned R2, and the green area is the Site history, on June 24th of 2008, the Oldham County Planning Commission denied a request by Odom Farms Development LLC for the approval of preliminary plan for development consisting of 345 single-family residences on approximately 247 acres, to be known as Brentwood subdivision. That decision did go over to Oldham County Circuit Court, which issued an agreed order, and that remanded the docket to go back to the Planning Commission, and was approved via special meeting within three days. So on July 25th of 2008, a special meeting was held to uphold the agreed order and approve the development. So again, the applicant is requesting to redesign the road network for Section 6 of the development, and per the subdivision regulations, 3.2 potential action amendment/revocation, a plat approved, a plat approved may be amended by action equivalent to that which approved the original plat. If additional lots are being created, or roadway created or eliminated. So basically, it's saying if they change the plan by either adding lots, or removing or deleting roadways, they have to come back to you guys, since you approved the original plan. So this is an approved, the approved plan, the overall approved plan, you'll see the area highlighted here, is the Section 6 that is in discussion today. So the applicant is proposing to create two small cul-de-sac streets instead of one longer cul-de-sac street. By doing so, the home will be further away from the environmentally sensitive areas and the floodplain. So this is a zoomed-in version of what was previously approved back in 2008. This is the proposed layout. This is just a comparison of the two. So again, this was the current approved layout, this is the proposed layout. This is, just shows the existing zoning. This blue area here is the floodplain, so there is some 100-year floodplain that is located on the property, and then this is the conservation zoning, which usually follows waterways and steep contours, or anything of that nature. So they're trying to pull the development away from that area. So in summary, the applicant is requesting approval of a revised preliminary subdivision plan, which is solely just the road layout for Brentwood Section 6. And that is all that I have.
All right, Ms. Alvey, thank you. Mr. Solomon, I ask you again, do you have anything to present on this one?
Yes.
Okay. This is our county engineer.
I wasn't sworn in earlier, so...
I'm sorry?
I wasn't sworn in earlier, so...
Right. Ms. Nunn?
Do you tell me so to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just name and address for the record.
Jim Solomon, county engineer, 100 West Jefferson. After review of this plan, we agree that it's a good design, a good revision to draw that cul-de-sac bulbs away from the steeper slopes. Had a couple notes, just with some stormwater, general design issues, but those will be addressed during construction plan review. So at this point, we agree.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, commissioners, any questions for staff at this point? Any questions? Yes, or Ms. Alvey?
Just one, I guess it's for Amy. There's no change in lots, though, it's the same amount of lots.
Same amount of lots, it's just the realignment of the, or different configuration of the road network. Yes, sir.
All right, any additional questions for either Mr. Solomon or Ms. Alvey? Okay, since seen none, we all open it up now for presentation by the applicant, or representatives and others in support of the application. And 50 minutes, sir. And if I could...
They have, they have a presentation.
Okay. While she's doing that, we'll get everyone sworn in, it's going to speak, and then we'll get your name and address.
I don't know if the law speak, but we'll go ahead and swear everybody in.
Ms. Nunn?
Do you tell me so to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Just your name and address for the record, please.
Brian Beeman, I'm attorney with Wyatt, Tarrant, and Combs, 500 West Jefferson Street, Suite 2800. Beeman, V like Victor, E-E-N-E-M-A-N. Representing, anything else? Representing Odom Farms Development, the applicant, and the landowner. Also with me are Mike Hill, Senior Land Planner, and Eric Sen, Engineering Manager from Land Design and Development, on behalf of Odom Farms Development as well. Ms. Alvey stated this very well, it's pretty straightforward, and not too many, much change to what we originally had in the original preliminary plan. As was mentioned, the basic issue was revising one larger cul-de-sac road into a, two shorter cul-de-sac roads. The reason, as it was mentioned, is the slope and the contour of the land, would be pulling it back to less steep areas, and prevent lots and residents from being on too steep of lots. There's no variances or waivers being requested, and we believe the revision is better, it's less intensive to the existing environment, away from the conservation zoning area, as Ms. Alvey mentioned. As was, was asked, and response was, there are no differences in the lots, so as a result, there's no traffic issues, there should be no change in that, or any other kind of change, same amount of open space, et cetera. Overall, a minor but beneficial improvement, in our opinion. Land Design has been working on this subdivision since its inception. If there's any questions, they'll be sure, they'll be happy to answer them. We have some slides, but they're pretty much the same slides that Ms. Alvey had presented earlier, so. That's it for now?
Okay, so that, that's your presentation, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak in support of this application? Anyone else here to speak in support of? All right, is there anyone here to speak, or have testimony, or questioning, opposing the application? Anyone here to speak, or have testimony opposing? Okay, seen none, I'll open it up now for the commissioners to ask any questions, or of the, of the applicant. Any questions on what they're requesting? Ms. Nassar?
This question's for the applicant. Just one quick question, the original plan showed a park area, what was planned for that area?
We can both, we can both talk. There was no, the park area may have been a misnomer, it's green space, so there was no, you know, like a playground set plan, or anything like that. At the entrance to the subdivision, there is a clubhouse tennis courts that are more the park-like setting. So, but that, that green space that you're referring to will still be there, just in different configurations with the lot, movement.
Okay. Is that all, Ms. Nassar? Okay. Any additional questions? Additional questions? Okay, seen none, we will move in for final statement. Do you have a final statement, sir?
Nothing further, we just respectfully request that the approval be made. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Mr. Urban, if you would, let's outline what's being requested here, and then I'll open it up to the commissioners for their consideration.
Sure. This is a fairly simple request, and it almost was a staff-provable request, except that the road is being moved, so we had to bring it to you. The consideration is for revised preliminary subdivision plan for the road layout in particular, there are no additional lots. On page 2 of your staff report, our motions with findings for either approval or denial. If you choose to make a motion to approve, on page 3, there's an incorporation of the previous docketed minutes from the docket number PZ-16020, that's June 28th of 2016, should be adopted by reference, in case there's something in those minutes that relates to this particular revision. There is only one proposed condition of approval, and that, that this approval only applies to the application considered at the August 27th, 2019, Oldham County Planning Commission Public Hearing.
With that, commissioners, you've heard what's being requested here, I'll chair would open up now for consideration of any motions that relate to this docketed item, which is PZ-19018.
And that's, that's a typo, that item C, the approval incorporate the minutes in the decision, it has the wrong docket number and date. It should be docket number PZ-0815 of July 25th of 2008. That's a, that's a typo on my part, I apologize.
Okay.
What is the P, the number again, PZ-08?
Sorry, let me get back to it. History, history, history. PZ-08-15, and that was July 25th of 2008.
Start with anything you need to add.
That's my mistake.
All right, with that, commissioners, chair, we now entertain motions as relates to docket PZ-19018. Do you have any motions? Mr. King?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move for approval of the application as presented for modification of the road layout, no change in lots. This is to incorporate by reference the noted docket PZ-08-15 from July 25th of 2008, and the conditions of approval is noted by Mr. Urban.
Okay, is that adequate, sir?
Yes.
Okay. All right, you've heard the motion, do we have a second? Okay, Ms. Davis, seconds. Any discussion on the motion to approve docket PZ-19018, which is application by Odom Farms Development for approval of revised preliminary subdivision plan, road layout for Brentwood Section 6? Any discussion? Okay. Seen none? I'll ask if we go ahead and just do the vote here on this docket PZ-19018.
Okay. Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Hafling?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
The vote to approve docket on PZ-19018 has been approved on a vote of 11 to 0. And, Mr. Clor, I just wanted to say this one went a little faster than some of these in the previous have gone, so thank you all for being here. And this one has been approved. All right. With that, we are down to one docketed item. And if we could, I'll get Ms. None to read the last docketed item.
Okay. Docket PZ-19... Chair Mike.
My call.
Docket PZ-19-017. Application has been filed by Robert Wright for the approval of a minor subdivision plat and waiver, or with waiver, on approximately 15.677 acres. The property is located at 8725 Ash Avenue, Pee Wee Valley. The zoning is R1 Residential District and R2 Residential District.
All right. This is your last item on your docket for today. Again, this is a application for a minor plat with waiver for property. The address of the property is 8725 Ash Avenue, but they actually front Old Floydsburg Road, so we'll get into that in just a minute. The property is zoned R1 and R2 residential, and the entire site is 15.677 acres. This is an aerial view of the property. This is actually 8725 Ash Avenue there. PVA has it all as one tract, but it's technically two separate tracks. I guess for taxing purposes, it was consolidated for that portion. But the tracks in question run along Old Floydsburg Road there. This just shows the existing zoning of R1 in the lighter yellow, and then the darker yellow is the R2. There's no previous site history on this, so this has not been before the planning commission for any other decisions. So, the applicant is requesting to create five tracks from one existing track that contains approximately 15.677 acres along Old Floydsburg Road. So, they're wanting to create... There's one parent tract, and they want to create four additional tracks. So, you have track 1, 2, 3, and 4, all approximately two acres, and then the residual tract is 7.3 acres. So, this is looking at Old Floydsburg Road. So, this is the residual tract that the applicant will retain, and they're proposing four tracks here. So, if you transpose this onto the aerial and flip it, so again, this is Old Floydsburg here. So, you have the residual 7.3 acre tract there, and then the four proposed building According to the definition in Section 2.2 of the subdivision regulations, a minor subdivision, again, is a subdivision of land into not more than three lots within five-year time period and not involving a new public street or private road. Definition of a major is a subdivision of land into four or more lots of any subdivision involving a new public street or private road. Also, any division of land beyond three lots within a five-year time period from a parent tract or a tract divided therefrom. So, the applicant is not proposing a new public street or private road. The two rear lots will be accessed via an access easement. So, the applicant has stated he wishes to sell off the four tracks to help support his farming business. He raises bushes and landscape stock and retain the 7.3 acres as that is where his nursery stock is located. If approved, the homes we build on tracks, on the tracks, would be in like value to the newest homes around the corner on Ash Avenue and will not be a detriment to the neighborhood. And these statements come from the applicant's justification statement. And also, the strict compliance with the regulation would not allow the applicant to create the lots he wants to sell and retain the 7.3 acre tract to continue farming. This hardship could possibly require him to sell the entire farm in one tract, eliminating the land use, land he uses to farm. Again, this comes from the applicant's justification statement. If you do decide to approve, excuse me, the minor plat request, the applicant will be required to send a minor plat application to staff, which will then be forwarded to serving agencies for review and comment. So, this is the entrance into what we will call the farm tract, the 7.3 acres that the applicant is wishing to retain. This is the south view on Old Floydsburg Road. So, this is going back out towards Ash Avenue. This is the north view. This is all of the applicant's property along through there. This is just another north view from sitting on the other side of the road, looking into the applicant's property. This is the western view, so these are all pictures of the properties that are across the street from the proposed lot divisions. This is the north adjoining property owner, so this is all the way at the top portion This is the east. So, this is a... There is an existing stub road from, I believe it's Confederate Estates, that stubs into this property. So, this is just a view from that stub, looking into the applicant's property. So, in summary, the applicant is requesting a waiver of Section 2.2 of the subdivision regulations regarding a minor subdivision to create four divisions within five years. So, they're wanting to create four new tracks, retain one, so there'll be five tracks in all, in the approval of a minor plat. So, this is the proposed configuration. Happy to answer any questions if Mr. Solomon has anything else.
Mr. Solomon, do you have some information you need to bring forward?
I was speaking with Mr. Garber this morning, and just to clarify, in case anyone had confusion on the location map, it shows the site adjoining Ash Avenue, but he was going to adjust that because it does not, as shown on the larger detail, so...
So, he does not join Ash Avenue?
That's correct. Or a button.
All right. All right. With that, commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? Any questions? All right. Don't see any hands going up. So, we'll now move into the presentation by the applicant, or others, representatives, and others in support of the application. Mr. Baxter, 15 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I, along with David Garber, represent Robert Wright. Mr. Garber and Mr. Wright are present. I would ask to get them sworn if I could, Mr. Chairman.
You saw me sort of tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Okay.
This, obviously, is a pretty simple application that we are presenting to you today. Just by way of history, this piece of property is a piece of property that has been in Mr. Wright's family for a very long time. And his father operated a nursery at this location, and Mr. Wright has continued to operate that nursery. Obviously, around him, the property has gotten built up over the years, making this piece of property, this nursery property, a little bit more valuable in its current location. He is a small, one-person operation. He is not really in a position to continue in this location with operating his business. He'd like to actually move to one of the adjoining counties, and the way he is seeking to do that is to fund that move by selling these lots. Okay? Now, just for your all's information, first of all, this property is not on sewers. So, if you look at the R1 and the R2 regulations, we've got some, we've got some issues with the way this residual tract is with the road frontage. However, if we wanted, for example, to put in three lots along here, which I believe is permissible in the five-year period without the waiver, is that correct, Mr. Urban? That's what I thought. So, this row right here, and I'm going to let Mr. Garber talk about his design a little bit, but that's about 610 feet. In order to be able to do this in this zone, he needs 150 feet of road frontage so he could do three lots, and I don't think, based upon your current regulations, that we would even need to be here. This configuration allows him to add an additional lot and allows him to preserve the area here, which is an area that he will continue to raise some shrubbery on for the immediate time while he works through trying to relocate and find someplace else to open a nursery business. So, I give you that context because, you know, I think it's important that we're asking for one additional lot.
I need to... You asked me a question, and I need to correct it. You keep saying three lots. You can create two new tracks.
Two new tracks. I apologize.
Two new tracks, so you can have three altogether, not three tracks.
In the five years. Right. So, and I apologize. Thank you, Jim. So, he could still have two along here. And the other thing, I guess, is important contextually, is that we've got a lot of small lots back here in Confederate Estates. These lots that are across the street from what he is proposing, these are larger lots...
Bottom right corner.
I am bottom right.
Top right corner.
There we go. Bottom left corner. Okay. These are larger lots that are going to be along the size of what we're talking about putting in in this particular piece of property. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Garber to explain his design a little bit.
My name is David Garber with Garber Chilton Engineers and Land Surveyors, 2249 Commerce Parkway, La Grange, Kentucky, 40031. Mr. Wright came to us and asked us to help him come up with a configuration for some lots that he could sell, as Mr. Baxter said, that he wants to be able to maintain his farm, that he... And this 7.285, the residual tract, is where he's farming now. He's not really farming on the others. He wants to be able to retain that. And what we came up with and what Mr. Wright wanted, he wanted lots to at least be two acres in size. Two acres allows for, if there's a problem with the septic system that gives you... The health department likes two acres. You know, one acre is allowed, but every time I go talk to Charlie Ward, he said, "What if you have a problem?" Mr. Wright has told me that he's farmed this land for many years, and he said the soil is good, so we have no problems in thinking that it is going to perk okay and be acceptable for individual septic systems. But with two acres, it's pretty safe. So, in what he's envisioning are larger homes. People would more like to build a large home on two acres, but yet not too much land. It seems that people aren't wanting five and 10 acre tracts. They want, they want a pretty house and just a little bit of land to mow and have fun on. So, that's how we came up with this configuration. Actually, the Lot 1 and Lot 4, they're... They can have access directly to Old Floydsburg. I was out there looking a couple days ago, and as far as sight distance, you can see all the way to Maple and all the way to Ash from here. It's nice and flat. You've got clear sight distance. There'll be no problems getting approval for the driveways. And then the back two tracks will be, will use a... We're showing a 50-foot access, a utility easement, to give plenty of room for a drive and utilities to come back there. So, that's how we came up with the configuration. They will, like I said, lots 2 and 3 will be served by that access easement. And the residual is already driveway there, and also, Mr. Wright... And I apologize for the sight map showing the frontage over on Ash. It does not, that is, it is a separate lot there, so that the way the red line, how staff has it shown, is correct. But...
Did you draw that on the screen?
Sure. Oops. I pulled a berry. Sorry. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Okay. This is Mr. Wright, actually lives here right now, and what he can do is actually, he can access his farm by going through his backyard. So, that's another reason for, even though that's where he's farming now, but he can have direct access between his house and the farming operation without actually having to get out on either one of the roads. So, that would, that would maintain some privacy for the people who are going to buy these new lots. So, that was another reason kind of how the configuration is. We felt that by providing those two-acre tracts, it would be, it would be something that people would want to buy and build on, and I think Mr. Wright will can address you and tell you that I think he has a prospective buyer, and they are planning on building a pretty good size house. So, that's all I have for my portion.
Okay.
Yes.
Just, and this is probably my next slide. Can you tell the members of the commission about road frontage on Lot 1 and Lot 4, how big those lots are?
Certainly. Lot 1 actually has 359 feet of frontage, and then Lot 4 has 200, roughly 202 feet of frontage. So, we're well within the minimum requirements and the regulations, and it gives a lot of width for people to plan where they want to put the driveway.
Okay. And all of these lots are going to be about two acre?
They're all over two acres, yes. Right, well, 2.00 to 2.001. So, they all hit right at two acres.
Okay. Thank you, sir. This is Mr. Wright. He just wants to address you all briefly.
Thank you. Robert S. Wright, 8725 Ash Avenue. Thank you for hearing my waiver hearing today. But all I can say is we've been farming this place. My dad bought it in 65, and I've been farming it since about 1990. I want to stay in the farming game, and I'm looking right at another guy that knows what I'm talking about. I want to keep in the game, and this is the only way I can do it financially.
And, Mr. Wright, I know it, I don't believe it shows on this drawing, but you live on Ash Avenue?
Yes.
And the property that the confusion's about, is that roughly where it is located?
Yes, yes. The residence is up there where that black line is.
And it's not part of this property. It's actually deeded off as a separate piece of property.
Barry, would you put that point out on the screen?
I've assumed it was all under the same address.
Point that out on the screen for us.
It's in this area, I believe, where the block is. That's what...
Okay. Okay. All right.
And I might have a... Would it be fair for me to say, Mr. Wright, that where I just drew this black area, that's where your house is located?
Yes, that's where it is.
And you have access presently, you can access what is going to be described as the residual tract back through the back of your property?
That's correct.
And you also have an access that Amy took a picture of, and I...
That's the gravel entrance on Old Floydsburg.
I think it's right there. Is that right?
Yes. That leads into the barns and tractor sheds.
Okay. All right. And how long have you lived in this, in this house on Ash Avenue?
Built the house in 99.
Okay. So, you've been there since 1999?
At that residence, yes.
All right. And then, was there ever a residence in the, what, the big tract here?
No. I understand Mr. John Geesiger had a dairy farm over on Maple, and he's the one my dad bought the land from.
Okay.
I think it's just strictly pasture land.
Okay.
We're the only ones that put any buildings on that since tractors and trucks have been around anyway.
Now, and it's a little bit difficult to see from the aerial, but there's... Is this a building?
Yes, that's the main barn.
Is there any other structures on the property?
Just past that, that other light patch that's narrower, it's right near the red line.
Right there? Where I put the black?
Just a little to the left and above that. That's...
Okay. Right in that area?
Yes.
And what is that?
That's a tractor lean-to shed. That's where all my equipment's parked at, for the most part.
And not being a farmer, I'm not really real keen on what this is. What's in the area of the circle? Why is that lighter area there?
That lighter area there, that's part of the crop land. There's also a compost bin. I take in tree chips from tree trimmers that need to dump them nearby, and I compost them, turn them over and turn them over until they break up, and I incorporate that back into my ground. That's how we've been able to keep farming since 65, because B&amp;B Nursery takes a lot of topsoil out of the ground.
Okay.
That's another reason why I'm needing to get some more ground, because I'm not quite wore out yet, but the ground's getting close to it, so...
And so, all of these kind of lighter areas are areas where you've raised what you call a crop?
Yes. Shrubbery, trees, principally sell to landscape industry developers. Anybody's got the money.
Okay. All right. That's all I need. All right. That's good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, I think that concludes our presentation.
All right. Thank you. All righty. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in support of this application? Anyone to speak in support of? All right. What about the testimony and questioning by those opposing the application? Yes, sir? Is there, is there more than one person that would like to speak? We'll get everybody to stand up and get you sworn in all at once, and then you can come forward and give us your name and address at that time. Ms. None?
Okay. Do you saw me sort of tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Thank you.
Name and address.
John William Stater. I live at 6621 Old Floydsburg Road, Pee Wee Valley, Kentucky, 40056.
Just slide right over here. This is the microphone.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Yes.
We'll get you here in just a moment. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. First, I just thought I'd say right up, I represent my wife and my three children. We live across the street, basically from where the, it appears that the easement for the two back lots would come out.
Thinking right here. Oops. Over here. Okay. But I think there may be a better picture for you to look at. So, sir, I've moved you.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay.
You see Old Floydsburg is there.
I'm between the D and the F.
Okay. So, if we go back, if we go back, and these lots up here at the top, do you recognize which one is your driveway, just so they...
I think, oh, God, it's like a reading test from Heck. I don't see my driveway on there. I think I see, I see my neighbor's driveway, but I don't see his. Wait. Go back. That mailbox is my mailbox. That's my house. Wait. Stop there, would you please? Go back one more. Stop there. Okay. I just thought I wanted to draw out a few facts. First off, Mr. Wright is a great neighbor. We've lived in the house since 2010. We've had absolutely no issues with him, and my wife and our family fully support his plans for the future. We have no personal animosity. In fact, we wish you the very best in your plans. Old Floydsburg Road is a very busy and unsafe road. If you can see in this picture right here, you can see a speed bump. Last, about a year ago, we had three speed bumps put in. In the 300 days before those three speed bumps were put in, the police gave out 300 speeding tickets on that road. At the end of the road where it intersects at Ash and Old Floydsburg, there have been numerous accidents, and it's being studied for improvements as we speak. There's a lot of traffic on this road. It serves a lot of homes, not just our four homes. I guess what I'm trying to say at here is, right now, the plan is to only subdivide, you know, to put in four home plots. In Pee Wee Valley, you can, of course, sub, you can, of course, subdivide those down into four additional lots. So, basically, there is the potential here for eight more homes. So, you know, do the math and extend that out. You're looking at a lot more traffic on this road. This, if you also look at this lot, these lots, they're uphill from our lots, and we get a lot of water. The road on Ash is... And we get a lot of water, the road on Ash is constantly flooding. There are water issues in this area. I think there needs to be some better planning on how those back lots are going to be accessed because right now, if it rains, I'm looking to get a lot of water down my driveway and, you know, that's going to create safety issues both on Ash and issues for my home. Leave it to my neighbors to speak for themselves. Again, I would just like that, you know, for some better, more refined plans on what those, how those back lots, how people are going to access the highway. Um, it can, you know, right now, it looks like this could turn into an eight-house subdevelopment. If we, if the lot size was dropped down from two acres to 1.99 acres, which is a very small amount of land that's being given up, then a lot of our issues start to go away. So, that being said, you know, those are the major points I think that I wanted to make. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Josh Wainwright, W-E-I-N-W-R-I-G-H-T. I'm at 6619 Old Floydsburg Road, 40056.
All righty, go ahead, sir.
I have, my wife and I have lived in that, we built that house, uh, six years ago. We've been living in that house for a little over five years. Uh, Mr. Wright is a super guy, very hardworking. He's representative of small farmers who have made this country what it is. Um, I, I fully support his, his attempts to increase his income because that's what's necessary these days by selling off some of his property in order to buy more property in a, a joining county where he can, uh, make more money to take care of himself and his family. All those things are, are positive things which I fully support. What Mr. Stater said relative to the number of homes potentially that will go into the four lots currently under consideration is a very important issue for me and my wife. As I'm sure most of you know, Peewee Valley is, um, is what it is because of the, the size of the lots that are, uh, that make up the majority of the homes there, um, the, the, um, the feeling of, uh, people who live there, uh, in mostly larger homes. And, and I'm not trying to be, uh, I'm not against people who can't afford these things, but, uh, it is what it is. And I think that it's important that we try to maintain, uh, the feeling, uh, and that Peewee Valley offers. Uh, I agree also that if we reduce the size of lots by one tenth, by one tenth, going from two acres to 1.99 and preventing those lots from being subdivided again into potentially eight homes on that, uh, smaller homes that would obviously be smaller homes, I think would be, uh, a benefit to Peewee Valley and the homeowners there.
Thank you, sir. All right, is there anyone else here that would like to, uh, either has questions or testimony in opposition to this application? Anyone else here? Okay, seen no one. Commissioners, open it up now for any questions that you have for either the applicant or the two gentlemen that have testified in opposition to. Ms. Davis? Is your mic on, ma'am?
My question is really, when they're discussing this, taking it down to a smaller lots, is there a potential that those lots could be divided into smaller lots if they're at two acres? Would they not have to come back and go through?
Usually and always, we have a condition of approval that says no further subdivision of land or, or by, only as, uh, the plan that was presented today, um, the idea of making them 1.99 acres each or less does solve that problem. They couldn't be divided because the minimum lot size is one acre.
Thank you.
So, either mechanism could work. Uh, the, we always file certificate of land use restrictions that says that it can't be further subdivided, but, um, you know, it's really kind of up to whatever you all think is the right mechanism if you choose to approve this.
So, we can put a stipulation that it can be further divided? Is that what you're saying? Can we add that in?
We always do. I mean, I think that's, um, you know, it's, I think, well, what we're saying here is that it only, uh, applies to the application considered at this meeting today. So, that's one mechanism. You can say that the lots cannot be further subdivided. I think the question is, will the 7.2 acre tract be allowed to be subdivided one day? Do you want to eliminate that or, um, you know, again, I think the concern was that, uh, and the idea that if it's less than two acres, it can't be because they would not comply with our regulations unless sewers came in.
Thank you.
Okay. Additional questions? Additional questions? Mr. Finney?
On, on this subdivision of the lots, uh, if they're left at two acres, that would be, the statement would be that they could not be subdivided without being brought before the board again?
That's a typical language, yes.
Okay, so it does not mean they could never be subdivided, it just means they'd have to come back for approval? If they were 1.99...
They could not be period.
They could not be subdivided, period.
They weren't big enough.
Correct.
You'd have to either consolidate tracks or maneuver around that way, but, um, so it all depends on what, if again, you're considering this, what your intention would be for that area. Um, you know, there are smaller lots in the area, so it's, it's all again, your preference as to what language you want to put if you're going to consider approval.
Or if the applicant agrees to put on the minor plat that these lots shall not be further divided, that plat is recorded and that plat follows the deeds with each one rather than on a certificate of land use restriction. That usually doesn't tie back to each individual lots once they're sold. So, that puts it on notice to each of the buyers at the time. It refer, refers back to the minor plat creating it. So, if the applicant agrees to the lot shall not be further divided, that note can be added to the minor plat and then recorded.
Mr. Baxter?
Well, we're, finish with the questioning because they may have additional questions before you...
Ms. Finney?
Where, where do we run into, uh, the requirement for sewers and are sewers available in the area?
Well, in the city limits of Peewee Valley, there's irregardless if sewers are available, the minimum lot size is one acre, irregardless if they're septic or sewers.
They have a separate ordinance stating that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Baxter, are you, you've heard the concern expressed, are you...
We don't have any objection to what Ms. Alvey, Alvey suggested, putting it on the plat so that it follows the property.
Okay.
That way, we don't have to redesign it, the lots at that point. And I think, and, and one of these lots, and I apologize for not knowing the numbers, uh, Lot 4, uh, doesn't have enough road frontage to be able to be divided anyway. I mean, there's not, I, I think they've got to have 150 feet and it's a 200-foot lot. So, I mean, there'd be an issue with that anyway. But, but we don't have an objection to putting that on the, on the record plat.
Okay. Mr. Wainwright, you'll have an opportunity here in just a second to respond or ask additional questions or whatever. Commissioners, do y'all have any other questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Douglas?
I have a question for staff. I understand that there's a stub road at Confederate Place Drive. Was there any consideration of connecting Lot 3 to that stub road?
I don't know the condition of that, uh, let me see, uh, it, it looks like pavement doesn't go all the way to the property land. I'm not sure, um, it is a 60-foot public right-of-way. I don't think they're asking to connect to that.
Right, there's, there's showing no connection or the access is all through Floydsburg Road.
I don't want to gum this up, but I may be gumming it up. So, I, I, I run and ride my bike through this subdivision all the time and I don't, I don't think where you think that stub road is, is, man, that doesn't look right. Weird.
I came in off Five Forks, coming off...
Is this the cemetery?
Yeah, that's the cemetery.
I, okay, all right, I, I...
I can't think of the name of this street.
It's further down. There, there's another stub.
What is it? Confederate Place Drive.
There's another stub, there's another stub back in there too, right? That, that has a little access to get into the other subdivision, but this isn't it.
Yep.
Sorry.
That's all right.
You're, you're right, Amy, I apologize.
Yeah.
All right. Any additional questions from the commissioners? Mr. Douglas, did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Seen no hands go up, uh, we will move into rebuttal evidence and cross-examination by the applicant. Mr. Baxter, you'll, you'll have my opportunity here in just a second.
Um, I understand the concerns of the neighbors and we certainly don't have an objection to put in, and I don't think Mr. Wright has any intention of this property being further subdivided. So, I think Amy's suggestion that it be put on the record plat solves that problem because once the property's conveyed to some third party, uh, they, they can't come back and ask you all to do something different because that property's restricted in that way. Because of the size of what we're talking about, you know, there is obviously some engineering that'll have to go on. Once we get to the, the, uh, record plat, uh, stage and Mr. Siliman will have to review, uh, what, what we do, but, you know, this doesn't require a traffic study, it doesn't even require a traffic assessment for this particular location. And I, I understand that Floydsburg is a busy road, but it's very straight, sight distance is good on that road. Uh, this is not, uh, near the stop sign, there's a ways to go, it's not near an intersection. I, I don't think that that presents any kind of problem. So, uh, uh, understanding their concern, I, you know, we feel like this is the best way and the best use of that. And, and hopefully, the, uh, the agreement to put that on the record plat, uh, will sort of, uh, deal with their fears that this property could get further subdivided because that, there's, there would be no way for that to happen if it's on the plat. So, thank you all.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wainwright, Wainwright, y'all can come back up now if you would.
I'm old, you'll have to wait a second till I get it.
That's all right.
This is legitimate right here. I, I just want to reemphasize the, the fact that I have spoken, uh, to most of the neighbors who were, uh, involved here and to a man or a woman, we fully support the sale of this property by Mr. Wright. I think it's, uh, it's a good thing for him and for, uh, for the neighborhood, but our only concern was, and possibly has already been addressed here, is the number of prop, of, uh, of tracks that are going to go in there. Um, and, and again, I don't care what anybody says, he is a good man and we'd like to see this happen.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Wright, before you sit down, is there, would you like to have a final statement, uh, other than this rebuttal?
No, no.
Okay, you're good.
Unless it's to get somebody else in here to represent Peewee Valley, please, as soon as possible.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, um, we're down now to final statement. Mr. Baxter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my client, Mr. Wright, would ask that you all approve this docket and the waiver request. Um, the reasons have already been stated. I don't think that this is going to, uh, be a, a big issue. It's not like we're in here asking for 400 lots, we're asking for four. So, uh, you understand his reasons for doing that. Uh, it's appropriate in this location. Uh, there's a lot of lots that are this size and this nature in this area and it, uh, conforms to the comprehensive plan and actually fits in this location very well. So, we'd ask you to approve his application. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, with that, we'll, I'll now, as always, ask Mr. Urban to outline what's being requested here and then I'll open it up for commissioners' consideration.
Okay, so this is a waiver of the minor subdivision plat to allow, uh, four new tracts to be created in, in lieu of the, uh, only two. So, there'll be five tracts, including the residual tract. In your staff report, uh, should you choose to either approve or deny, there are sample motions. If you choose to approve, there are three proposed conditions of approval, two that are in your staff report and we're going to add a third. The first is that the waiver shall only apply to the application considered at the August 27, 2019, Olden County Planning Commission Public Hearing. The second is the applicant shall submit a minor plat application for review and approval by staff and serving agencies. And then the third is one that I just wrote and I'll see if everybody's in agreement with it. Mr. Baxter, a statement shall be placed on the minor plat for each lot that no further division of the tracts will be allowed.
If you would, just get that on the record.
Uh, that, uh, the third condition is acceptable to my client.
Thank you. Okay. Well, you've heard the suggestions here. Um, now, open it up to the commission for consideration on motion. Do we have a motion? Uh, Mr. King?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I would like to move for approval of the application as presented, based on testimony and evidence presented. I find no conflict with the comprehensive plan. I find the proposal to, uh, represent, um, uh, parcels that are consistent with those in the general vicinity and, uh, retain the character. And of course, I would like to, um, incorporate the conditions of approval by, noted by Mr. Urban into this motion.
Okay. Mr. Carter, is that adequate?
Yes.
All right, do we have a second? Mr. Hampton, seconds. All right. Uh, any discussion on the motion to approve the docket, on Docket PZ 19017, uh, for Mr. Wright for approval of a minor subdivision plat with waiver on approximately 15.677 acres? Any further discussion? Okay. Oh, yes, sir.
Yeah, I have one question, which is probably somewhat silly, but, um, if we're here requesting a waiver of our current regulations of a minor subdivision plat, what's to prevent someone from coming back in the future and say, "I want to ask a waiver of the current deed that says you can't subdivide it"? Is that possible if it's on the deed to do that?
Um, well, I, I can't address the issue of being on the deed, but certainly in the certificate of land use restrictions that we file in the deed room, which become public record, we'll have this statement and also the attached, on the deed, they usually attach a minor plat. So, when I, if I were to purchase Lot 2, I have a minor plat. And that will make this statement that says, um, you know, can't be further subdivided. And so, the property owners are being, are purchasing willingly. Now, the issue of the deed, I'm not sure of.
There's no deed, is...
Well, they create a deed for that tract and...
The answer is if it's in a deed restriction, it goes with the land. If it's part of planning zoning decision, it can be waived.
Thank you.
But, but it, but it has to be on the plat, so the restriction is a matter, it's a contract matter between my client and whoever purchased the property and any subsequent purchaser.
Yes, so therefore, if somebody came forward and said, "I want to divide this," whoever is staff at the time would see this and you would have it or any planning commission members would have it in their packet with that statement on it. So, again, it's publicly recorded, so everybody knows going into this that that statement is there, including any future consideration for division of the land.
Answer your question, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, I do want to clarify, does that include the residual tract of 7.2 acres? Because potentially that could be, and, well, I, I want to clarify that though. I want the commission members to understand that these are on the new lots, Lots 1, 2, 3, and 4, not on the residual tract because it's seven acres. So, potentially, to your question, that statement is not on the residual tract.
So, as an element of my motion, it was not the intent to pick up the residual 7.4 acres in that reference.
So, we should make that a clarification then, that a binding element, or the condition, rather, of approval is a statement shall be placed on the minor plat of Lots 1, 2, 3, and 4.
All right, so I will accept that amendment or, Mr. Chair, I suppose that's the protocol?
Yeah, that would be...
I'll, I'll accept that amendment.
Let me ask Mr. Hampton. Is that okay with you, sir?
Yes.
Okay. All right, they, they accept that, that it does not apply to the 7-point whatever...
Lots 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, and Mr. Carter, is that, is that adequate?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any further questions? Are we ready to vote? Okay, Ms. Nun, we'll do the vote. This is a vote to approve, uh, Docket PZ 19017, uh, for Mr. Wright for approval of a minor subdivision plat with waiver.
All right, Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. Halfling?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Finney?
Yes.
Ms. Alvy?
Yes.
Ms. Elder?
Yes.
Alright, the motion to approve docket P Z one-nine-zero-one-seven has been approved on a vote of eleven to zero. So with that, uh, before we, uh, adjourn here today, we've got a couple of things we need to, to cover. First thing, under other business, uh, Ms. Nassar, I think you had two hours of training you'd like to get approved?
Yes.
Okay, under House Bill fifty-five, we have to have eight hours of training every two years?
Correct.
And so, what, what was the relate, what was the training on?
It was, uh, real estate.
Chair, mic on?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, real estate code of ethics, um, and general training.
Alrighty, um, okay, so you heard, the commissioners, y'all have heard what the training was on. Can we get a motion to approve her two-hour training? Okay?
I'll make a motion to approve the training.
Okay, Ms. Alvy? Mister, okay, I've got several seconds. Any discussion? All those, we just do a voice vote. All those approving, Ms. Nassar's two hours of training for under House Bill fifty-five, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Okay, it's been approved, we'll add that to her training hours. What about next month, what are we looking like?
We have not received any applications at this point, um, so next month is September. In October, we probably will have two subdivision plans, anticipate those either in October or November, so, uh, but as of right now, we have not.
But we can anticipate potentially that coming back for the one that was tabled.
Yes.
So keep your packets, keep this particular one for next month or whenever they come back.
What about SRC?
Well, right now, I, I don't know if we want to discuss it now or not.
Well, we should, yeah.
Um, the fiscal court approved on August sixth, the proposed, um, updates to the zoning regulations as we had submitted or that you had forwarded to them. However, um, after approval, they have decided to go back and look at, um, distilleries and barrel warehouses again, and one comment on signs. So, uh, on Friday, uh, there will be a economic development committee meeting at ten, uh, where they will discuss, um, proposed changes to remove barrel warehouses, um, as a conditional use out of AG one. And put them only allowed in AG two, which requires a zoning change and which also means requires, um, legislative body approval. And, um, it has a caveat in it that you can only have a barrel warehouse, um, on the same parcel of land only if a, uh, distillery is located on that same tract of land. So, um, that, that's where we're at on that. So it's, it's gone back to fiscal court, so we as staff has elected not to move the, uh, proposed changes on to the other cities, um, until we have a final document that has been approved by fiscal court. So, um, most likely, that first reading, uh, fiscal court moved their meeting from, uh, I think, whatever, the third.
Whatever, third.
Whatever that third, the third is, the day after Labor Day, they moved it to this coming Friday, so there won't be a first Tuesday in September. But we anticipate a second reading and public hearing on September the seventeenth to adopt those changes.
Okay.
As we just said, that will.
Yeah, we, we just said that that'll, that unless they withdraw or they have problems getting something, you should, we should have a meeting to at least have that meeting.
So keep the packet, right?
Yep.
Keep that application.
Yeah, so be sure and keep that, that staff report from that one that was tabled.
So as far as the SRC goes, I don't think that we're going to have a September meeting, uh, but we are moving on. The comprehensive plan needs to be updated and Tom is working on that and staff. Uh, and at some point, we're going to have to start pulling that together. We've already, we thought we had an aggressive schedule, uh, to get it done, we're already going to lapse on that, but, um, so we could meet and start talking about the comprehensive plan update.
Alright, anything else for the good of the cause? Ms. Alvy, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, we will stand adjourned at about eleven, or, see, eleven-twenty. Thank you all.